If you hate someone, if you vote, they have no opportunity to vote for you. And you guys are being voted by governors.
Very good.
So that means if you vote a governor, then they have no opportunity, or rather they have no authority to vote for you. That is what you like there. I don't know what you meant. So that one means in case there is a partner that was supposed to be going to university, and then your finance was supposed to, you know, do this. You go there and tell them, "This person is supposed to get 10%, because I already gave them 10,000 during the campaign." Is that what you like? So have you checked? Before you answer, let me just finish. Another thing, this, it is a campaign, because all of us are here for campaigns, right? Like it is a campaign, because that is what happens, see, going on. What are you trying to achieve by this? Like, what have you gotten from the moment you've been here? What have you gotten? Because you sold yourself to us. Of all the past minutes you've been talking, you've sold yourself. And you are not looking for votes. I think so, because you are exiting office. Why are you selling yourself? If you know you did something nice, then definitely you don't need to tell us. We will see and we'll gauge what you've done without telling us. Because now if you sell yourself to us, we wanted you... Let me, in the mind of Comrade, we wanted you because you were leading, we wanted to benefit from you. Now if you sell yourself to us, you are of no benefit to the Comrade at the moment. Allow me to say that, I know it is quite harsh, but allow me to say that. Comrade wanted you then, because they thought they can benefit from you. But at the moment, we think we can't benefit from you, so you don't need to sell yourself to us. So, like, why did you come to me? And there is... Before I sit down, last one.
And for me to answer you very confidently, let me talk now. One thing is, you asked me, "Why are you coming here?" They're asking something, I was asked those questions. I didn't just come here, because when I came here, I said, "We're going to sit down, I discuss issues." So you're asking me now, someone's out of mind, it's like I'm explaining myself to them. But I'm not doing that. I'm answering only questions I was asked. I don't need any questions. There is a story I kept here, too, and it's because I want to listen to your question. Because leadership is like a progressive one. For you to leave office, you know what your plan, you have achieved something, and you have to make recommendations for the next leadership. That's why I'm here today, to come and make recommendations. When you address me and say, "Monica, these are the concerns, and these are things that you do not..." I thought the next leadership would be coming, or I leave the report at the end of students, and I say, "When I was in office, I was not able to do this, and these are the students' needs. We need to do this and do this in the next government," and I leave. When I was telling you about the way my... I wasn't saying that you write people. One, you need politics. There are faculties in Yeniliya that could put you just to campaign. For example, when I lock you up a room, it becomes a matter of your life and death. So what will you do? You must give, you have no other way. For you to leave that room, for someone to open up that room for you, you must leave. And that's why I was telling you, you must give them what they want. What do they want, money? For me to leave that room, I have to give them that money. And, and that's why I was calling out, telling them, if you want leaders, don't put your leaders, don't subject them to hard situations. In your badai, unajani kishapare your power. I'm a human, I must, because I like, do whatever you did to me. You see, that's why I was calling out you. If you are voting someone in, don't subject them in a situation whereby they become dangerous. They want revenge on you. I'm not explaining myself what you... I might be useless today, but I'm coming in, I'm useless, because I want to listen to you. For me to not only to report what I think, or what I have collected from some students, to make the next ones better, because I wasn't here for my presence. I was here for a long lasting change of problems. Yes?
I love your eloquence. The last question is, if you ask a common student... I think how they benefited from you, what do you think will be their answer? And then, lastly, you said that... You listen to the speaker.
Oh, for your first question, you asked me, then you asked a student randomly, and they benefit from me. One thing I'll tell you is that we're more than 42,000 students. So the random person you might end up getting, you may not enjoy it. So I have answered you that way. They will give you your answer according to who, how they relate with me. Number two, I didn't outrightly say that, yeah, some of the things are pushed, and it's with that administration, they don't go through, and I needed to come back to students. You know, this is, like I said before, it's a democratic kind of a system. You can have call, maybe you are answerable to your faculties. Like senior writer Kujia, or Dean of Faculty of Main, you could address issues with them. For me, I'm only answerable to senior administration. And for the incoming Unsa, what you have to know is that, if you're a faculty governor today, for me to report something to the senior administration, to the central one, you must have done me, like, you know, the official way of communication, you know? So you must have communicated with me, so that I don't go with rumors, that this is what is happening. Without a chain of communication, where to reach, and you can fail. So when I go to Professor, let's say, for example, Ugemo, in charge of academics, he addressed issues with him, like issues of progression. Project, if I were happy, I went to him, the dean of this faculty was called, they were in a meeting. And the dean was told, "Go now handle as per the faculty." So Pauzam was in a share happy, because I have brought it to their attention. Now they have gone back to the faculty, and what do they do? I leave it there. See, if the governors don't come back to me, or the campus leadership don't come back to me and tell me, this is what has happened, and now we call for this. I have no right to go question faculty leadership.
Thank you. Before I sit down, my issues, all 11 toilets are very dirty, so if they are... You've said, you've said you are collecting meals. All 11 toilets are very dirty, there is no T V. Off the back of the plates that kuhan manguo, nilibewa simu na laptop in those hostels. I texted you that day, because Simu yangu be gaka i kuenda, iliyanda various guys, when you were in court of law. I texted you, and you greeted. The other day, there is a lady, Aliangu ka uko chini, while you were in charge, ambulance. There was nobody to give that ambulance. I texted you, you never answered. I wrote an email to the, the, when you were in charge, and they told me that they have no power to do that. I texted you, you never replied. I texted them, Tibet, Tibet, never replied. So definitely, these Unsa have felt nothing. Allow me to say this, I'm not comparing, but previous Unsa, at least they did something that was tangible. You have done your part, and congratulations. I credit that. But this time, if we're doing election, please let us elect guys who can stand in for us. Let us elect guys who can be there, give us what you want. Otherwise, I think it's not nice for you leading us.
I am only positive, before you... Quiet, Cali, let me tell you something, you're coming in next. One thing is that, for the cleaning, for the cleaning issue, we sat down with the company and the university administration, why the hostels are not paid. And they said, "They are not being paid by their company." And what I proposed, and the proposal I have written, is that, instead of paying outsiders to do this cleaning, why can't we have our own company, company of students, do the cleaning for us?
I have a company that does cleaning.
I was saying, on a serious topic, I've written a proposal whereby students, if the workers are being paid 10,000, 15,000, for example, or even, students have to be paying not less than, and I'm aware that it's almost equivalent to that. I hope it will be managed by students, run by students, and the cleaning start by students, so that our hostels are well cleaned, and then we get paid, because work-study program is not effective for me, because I've just seen that 50 shillings per hour makes it difficult. But if someone gets a monthly payment of 15,000, 15 shillings, they can be in a position to pay for their own fees. So that's what we are doing. And for us to bill on this, we have to get feedback from students, on how the hostels have been very pathetic, and they're not being cleaned. So that's why we are demanding now. And if we come back from main campus, we come back from university, or from the report, and there is nothing being done, what happens? We call students and we tell them, "This hostel is dirty," and not, "Please say that." That's all I can tell you for now. Yes, I know. Don't feel bad for you to tell me that I've not performed. For you, you feel so, but for me, I feel like I've done something.
It is not a feeling. I was not talking out of feeling.
Okay, so if you, if you, okay, if you assume, or if you know that I have not done anything...
It's not assumption also.
Whatever you have, you...
My view.
But I have, I'm sure you've done anything, but my view is that I have done well. So all of us are on the right page. Yes?
Let me ask something, like, I want to try something. Something, yes? Does it mean when a president gets key, that's your administration, right? You had your administration from governor to whatever, what is it? Does that mean I'm Kwangi united in a way? You are not united?
One thing that you also have to know, for me, if they were to run, Kilamto are running independent candidate. Kilamto are running independent candidate. If there is anything else we can push.
One man, one court, one man, one court, one man, one court!
Now aspirants, I mean, if you're a president, you have to be careful. Some of the governors, or some of the, for the times, I've witnessed what Unsa does. Unangirame is mama, unauli, when you're among us, mama. But you want to pressure me as the one vying president. I mean, Kwangi is mama. Rama, you have to be careful, mama. Define, find yourself, do everything for yourself. Nime one, Kilamto, Kilamto as the only president. See what happens, see? We are independent, Kilamto are not a faculty candidate. Some of the issues are faculty independent. So if you're a president, Kilamto are not a personal interest candidate. So if you're a Uko, we are a body. You can say, "I might not buy someone else or oppose." And if you're in the moment, Unsa, you are unnecessarily opposed, like, you're opposing, you want to be, you want to be, that is the reason. You want to be, see, you want to be... But you want to be, you shout, thinking you're the one doing everything right. But someone else might be sitting down. So I think that united, which should be the other way.
Now?
Yes?
Kama amku united, you go, unasema, I would do it to Zineendelea, right? I choose to, to my Uko, pass a buck, you do it to Zineendelea. Sasa, kama, you do it to Zineendelea, utajua diu hostel, la kunama diu?
See, na pandio, mana kunagamendi ya faculty, yo ra ma diu?
Sasa, sasa, you know, I'm telling you this. I'm telling you this. If they support faculty leadership, that's why you have to understand how Unsa runs. Unsa, faculty candidate, you cannot social welfare, drama. Cancel, you cannot social welfare, yeah, yeah. She dey, she dey na feeling, you have a name. Kilamto, you're not a president, you do this, you have the ball, you're a team observer. Kilamto are in charge of their own section. Kama section is cold, kunashida, cold person comes here. I'm not here to lower you to serve Unsa, I'm also a student, kunagatuzinile. Sasa, ukita na meeting, unauli zana, spot in Nendeleadi, hostel in Nendeleadi, do you ask them that?
Yes, we do.
And they keep quiet?
Yeah, if they keep quiet, if there is nothing...
Hostel is doing, so quiet. Hostel is doing, please, so quiet. I couldn't keep hostel... Those things are...
I have a question.
That they were good in planning, they were good in listening, but they had no knowledge in execution.
Yes, exactly.
They had no idea in execution. They were good in planning.
Yes.
They could listen, they could plan, but not execute. Right now, I'm a senior, I'm a Kujia, because he is a candidate, I'm part of the next patient button. Sasa, yes, Sasa, I'm a funny, come on, please. Then, there's a certain thing, that you guys were being paid in order to save someone. For me, you will pay me a hard principle, yes. I will, I will pray you, my friend, you will give me a thousand, but I can have great, whoever I want.
And you will take that?
I will take it.
There's no principle there.
No, no, no. Principle is, you are being given, and you are being directed to vote a candidate.
That's why you're not...
That's why you don't have...
That's why, you know why you don't have principle?
Yes.
If, 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 true scenarios are here. If you're a man of your principles, you'll only behave that way by not asking. If today, Monica, I'm campaigning, and I come, you pay a thousand, or don't you ask me? And then you decide to vote a different person, that's when you have principles. But when you ask for it, and you vote a different person.
That's how it's taken off.
Yeah?
So... At last, do you understand the constitution of Kenya?
Yes.
So do you understand the constitution of Kenya? The justice?
She is a lawyer.
You are a lawyer.
Paclance, campus, she is not.
But she decided to preach what she knows, about the integrity, inclusivity, and accountability. So they have no... So you have preached the justice of our constitution, the integrity, the inclusivity, and accountability. Nime maleza.
Ayah, yeta ni kuwa.
And last, last now, last now, please, please, as we are going to vote for these... Please, someone used to refer them cows, but I'm sorry. As we are going to vote these people, please let be sober, let be realistic.
Well, yeah, thousand.
You see, we buy the thousand, and we go attack by it, because money is not enough. It's just be sober.
Martin, they are about, you know, if a lot of issues are, what can they do to you?
Nothing.
What can they do?
Nothing. System, lipstick.
Okay, so, yeah, I have some ideas. Who are you?
Why you ask who are you?
Check it, check it. Give, give some space. Yes, yes.
But if you have class, we can think, you can think of a proposal about the student parliament. That these people who are elected, how can they speak in one voice?
Exactly.
If you are going to say that there's going to be a student parliament, then people from, people from main campus, from engineering, from Jiromo, they come together. These are leaders. You see, in that group of leaders, it doesn't mean all of them are failures. Or you can have seven people and lack in that, in that team, people who have ideas, because we are in a one-class university, and we have the intellectual capacity to run a nation. The one-class university is defined by their capacity to have leadership and great education. So if we are going to have a student parliament, then you can consider that as a proposal, so that people can come together and resonate, and see the issues that are facing us. So I think that's the only issue that I have. Thank you very much. Let me tell you something about it.
And many parties will not be totally, because we are mad, there will be a party there. We will have a chance, no, we are, this is serious matters. People have a chance, they have a matter, they have a... Let me answer, if we have a parliament issue, a proposal that is coming up. And you know one of the reasons why we don't become effective leaders? Come on, me, Monica, I might have the vision of what I want. For me, I'm given a mandate to have other team members. Hajayangu, you have competent leaders, because I don't know everyone from every faculty. So what do I want? I want someone who come and just fill my team. And the man who can now be, can we have independent candidates? Kilamto, I'm a commander, you are a commander. He has an agenda of what welfare gives to him, what he has to address. But some who can pay a mandate, you have to vote, you must vote. And then, Madam, do you have a good conduct?
Yes.
You have a, for Dulyako, you go, yes. Do you have all this?
Yes.
Come, we go. People who didn't have an idea of what they, people who didn't have ambition to serve students, but then you are given a mandate as the president, take over them, you see? So the parliament issue is there, it's a, we have gone to the parliament, they are coming to train students on how the parliament will be running, and how you want to come up with, what is called motions? And the constitution, yes. So it is something that is already ongoing. Astrid, no, you know, you're not going to campaign, I tell you. No, no, I will not put it, I will come and come use those, campaign. Yes?
Okay, me amukol lenoxpita, a first year, I think I have the first class year. So, you can assemble about the halls. I'm in hall six. The hall is located in first, in first floor. There is no washroom. You have to go to hall two, to floor number two. And then there is, the toilets that are there are inflexible. You have to move to another room. The other time, when you were living in hall seven, there was no magic. You have to come down, which we imagine the way they do. First floor, second floor, I can imagine. Last time, I went to the custodian. What he told me is that, they do, like, they repair the halls when the first years are reported. He forced me to go to a hole, unfortunately, that is when he lost his son, so I didn't start in there, so many issues. When you go to hall three, beyond hall three, hall two, you can get hall, hall two. You nearly live a new guy, you live in a new car, until there is a guy who reported, that is when you were in court of law. But I didn't know that drama is concerned about that. I would have approached him. So this one, somehow, if drama, if at all drama is concerned, then I don't think if he can hear that. Then, the second thing is that, about the mandaman. About, if, like, what I'm saying, Kalma speaks about, speaks about the mandaman. He says peace, like war, in a letter, in a letter, for example, in a letter, respect. So to Kianda mandaman, last time, I suggest to you what the person who should be leading us in the mandaman, so that they, the whole institution know that everyone is involved. But then if you leave the students alone, how, even, what I do, I do, about the students alone, the student leaders were not there. Last time, when it was happening, I went to one of the officials, how can you be, like, I can't go with the way the students want, we go with the administration. But then if you have the administration, what about the student? Who will, who will go with the student? So those are my two concerns. Mandaman, only good, we should go for it, and we should be led by the student leaders. Then number two, the situation of the halls, hall six, seven, and eight. Those are the first year halls. I don't know why in...
What I'm telling you is, the reality you have to understand is that, Kilamto, I'm a good maker there. So I try, welcome our students. Nicolau, for example, who come in campus every day, in mandaman, I had a... So how about then, what you have to know is that, you're not a shy idea, Unsa. Automatically, you register them as a learning. That you can't even call them, "Wambi, this is what is happening." You want to be seen as the person leading the mandaman, that's another syndrome that we have. So unamka, you want to be associated with the mandaman. Unaki, what's up, good, so you will want Monica to come in, because one thing, you are there, number one, is, you paint a bad person. So why would you call up for mandaman? You know, you want, let them, I'll be there. But then this mandaman, I was having exams. You mean, you have a first priority, my academic, then your issue comes as secondary thing.
Mani, do I have an issue?
Yes, number one?
I'm resolved. Comrade, I have an issue. My issue is on application and school fee. There are some students who cannot afford to pay for the school fee. How can you assist those students in order to pay for the school fee? One of them, and the last, school fee, my lead. So concerning the accommodations, I tell you, I stay in 11, but the situation is very filthy. I don't, I don't, because you are going to sit in that place, someone come to sit on that place, and then you are going to... How can you...
Okay.
To sit, to sit, the issue is, kama, I shall come in.
The issue is...
Yes, my last question.
I'm actually, I'm feeling with those leaders, no fight for the company leadership. You see, because, because you cannot, you cannot be dominated in the leadership. You want to begin with a fight.
I am, so one thing is, this project, you are...
So, so, this is my last issue. And those things, he and he not...
One of the things that I know is that, they stole, I am scared. Yes, they stole little information from the country. Uh, umuna yoko, munasaini. Legally, it is binding to you. So tunashikuwa ngaku, you can get past here, you can araka, you can approach, you can get in Ngerobi. You sign documents, and you do what? You go to a lawyer, they stamp, and I can submit online. So all those information, umuna funzi, who is a first year, do that, his school fees, see enough. So I'm a product, like, pekakko, pekakko. Then when you come to the issue of school fees, you sign a loan, you accepted the fee that was there. When you get a lawyer, you can sign. But then now, when you come in, unapuniza, unaputa, Monica, so you sign this bond. When you will sign, or they can afford, what are you telling us? So some legal, legal issues that comes in. Now, but then, Monica, get a Uko Street, she can solve them. So issue of school fees, see, issue of individual, you will sign bond, you can go to Ngerobi, what did you sign? Uh, we need to... I love you. Yes? Oh, bolden, you know, I want to, you need your next, ayah, boss.
You've been hard, because... Correct, bro, what was...
I correct, brother. Okay, so, my lead, thank you very much. Actually, people might not feel that your time in leadership type people. But one thing, I'm sure, is that you have a goodwill. Number one, you calling us here to deliberate on how we can transform the next leadership. And that has to be what we, the motive of us, we are not focusing so much on what you promised and you didn't achieve. We're focusing on what we can do to make it better next time. And that starts from the individual level as a person. Who are we going to vote in? People have goodwill, that's the thing. So, to that, you've done nice. And maybe at some point, people may not feel the value of you being in leadership unless you have them. That's when, now we get to say. And for the issue of mandaman, I think mandaman is the least we can take, the least option after all those things also have failed. At times, a good man, and he's not reported to handle. This is the issue you are having, the derivative of mandaman, is not reported to that. Love which you need and you're unaware. Somebody doesn't, is not aware to who is he or she supposed to report a certain matter to. So that, that's the issue. Actually, if we have a good channel, maybe it's things to do with welfare, you can make welfare, and who are reported to, no, not to. Because I think it's a, it's a system that runs from bottom to top. So I can do it, like, we are so many people, and I see how to complain, you don't answer to their messages. Do you think you're wrong, I want to hear everything, anyway? So if we have a system, like, we channel things to do with welfare as our sense, this person. A system that is...
Organized.
Yeah, is organized and has some sense in it, yeah? We are a one-class university, we have to show that we are people that have business and decorum type of assistance. Actually, that works, and for all of us, we've been crucial to everyone. So, so as we vote in the next government, let us be sober, people are sober. Let's not bring politics to leadership. The difference between a leader and a... The difference between a leader and a politician is, a leader is someone who focuses on what we call problem solving. But then, a politician will call skills to, you know, to guard that public eye, right? So let's focus on making a vibrant leadership, and whoever is going to be the president, grant that team, you, you, you leading them. So at least have these people you leading, no item, Tano, once in a while, meet, discuss this. This is, N'ayo, the Kana, what is achievable, you do, what you can handle. There are now, who are the people who can handle that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, what I want to know is, if there is a way, you know, in Unsa, you might be saying, Monica did not do much, but let me tell you, bring it to your mind, how would it work? Ni me, electua in March, I have one month to do the budget, and the next month is exams. And yet, for me, I can't organize an activity, because all of you are sitting for exam, which is a priority. So what happens is, the next four months will be on holiday. From July, August, September, October, N'Ushar, N'Ushure, those are four months, really. So when I come back there, N'afanya, Nidi, four months, Zangus, N'Menda, wasted. Which is a term that is meant to be our whole year. How do we work with this gap that is there? And I'm not able to plan for event, because, Ni me, say, Ma, Lo, holiday. Until I felt Bona to see, electua, before we go for Lo, holiday, in Moana. But immediately, Lo, holiday, exam, and accounting, another thing you don't understand is that they, they, you have to sit down and understand the Unsa constitution. You may see, see, it's not my responsibility alone, as someone buying, you know, you, I think, for me to read Unsa constitution, it was when I became international student, it was in the video, it was first time to someone. But as a good student, I should have read that the moment I entered, you will end. So there is so much little information regarding this organization. So then, how do we read, and how do we understand that at times, when I event, when I one over twelve foods, who can make a budget, who can draw funds for activities? And all these campuses have to do the events and account, there is what is called advance holder. So if the advance holder, if all of us are not accounting in the touching campuses, then they cancel. Apu, na event next, N'afanyeka? N'akama, we drew a lot of money this semester, or this month, the next month, we might not. Okay, if you, if you have two activities in the month to cover for the four months that begins, everything, N'asemo, Yaje, there is a certain amount of money you're supposed to withdraw. These are things you didn't know when you were campaigning, these are things that, N'ajua, you can get for Unsa. N'asi, Apu, N'anyana, Kwanget, I'll try to, sorry. No one tells you outright that this is what happened. N'akwambia, a blanket information, and what we are frustrated for is when the next Unsa come in, give them the rules. Me, as a lawyer, I want evidence written, so key communication, Nani, I'm getting, N'Yambia, you must give me that. If there is a rule against this, give me a document, write it in. Because finances is not what we have already. So if, if the next Unsa comes in, understand exactly, how can we bridge this gap of four months for us to have more activities than to, uh, call leaders and ask them, what did you do? So, any, oh, the next person, then him.
How are you? I'm Michael, Odiamu, a seventh year, that's why I was standing here, because we have, I'm not a parlayer, I pick one, I point one. So my problem is one, why am I, why am I here for almost six years? It's because of missing mark. And that's why, when I sat there and I was not being pointed, I decided to turn the front. I know that there is bureaucracy, but because you are going to report to them, missing mark is a problem, especially in main campus. Not because students do not do their, what, their, their work. What Mother Teresa say is what is happening, that if everyone could clean their doorstep, the whole one would be clean. But some people are cleaning their doorstep, but there are others that are not working. Students will go to class, you will do your exams, you will do your class, then somebody tells you that your class is lost. And again, they give you results, your results are first years, N'apuja, Kama, Uko, Tadiya. Ona, Pata, Olisha, Drop, Unitengene, Oanataka, N'Na, Uredu, N'Aresha, Drop, ona, such things. So at least, even as they want to handle this issue of, you have to have all the results before, for you to be promoted, especially in main campus. Because you are going to represent those issues, at least tell them that, at least they should also do something about it. They should not only put the pressure on students, but even the administration themselves, they should do their work, thank you so much.
Okay, and that is what I want to bring, this is a personal responsibility as well. As your president, I have no right to Kujia, who, question your lectures. But at times, you can, you can find someone blaming you that, Monica, you're our president, but you have missing mark. Then this is a class, you're a class, you have a class representative. So if one of the lecturers are giving this result, that is, as a class, what did you do? What do you say, Ma, Basi, Kilahit, the president? At your personal level, N'anyama, say, what did you do? And you know, Ambeanga, it is that, everything here in leadership is that hard, as getting missing mark from a lecturer, you know. N'asimba, Bona, Tijana, Mano, Na, Mme, Shingo, Kwanget, Mano, for one lecture. Bona, Msiyana, Kwanget, Mano, Na, Uo, lecturer, Mm, Shike, Une, Wito, M'aguma, by the way, Kian, Mano, Apa, Way, N'itwa, a central administration. But you, lecture, M'aguma, M'Kungia, Class, M'aguma. For example, I'm just saying, S'una, Sama, Oma, N'Amani. As a class, see, you are more than that lecturer, M'Ada, Kungia, because you are taking personal responsibility. M'Kungia, Basi, you are, M'Asima, Hata, M'Wanani, M'Amani, what did you do in your class when the lecturer did not list mark? Moana, so it is a personal initiative, personal responsibility before we come to be a collective one. Yes. No, M'anyana, Record, N'Ani?
It is for the me, where is?
I'm, I'm the, the one in charge of this program, N'apu, N'Za, Permission? Who, N'Ani? Moana?
Jile.
Eh, N'ada, N'na, Kwanget, we record. But if you not, there's, we need same space. N'yatwa, Kujia, Badaya, N'apuja, N'apada, you can, N'semah, because this is a same space, N'apada, this thing, Komi, N'ana, you have victimized about it. Because what we, I'm not saying is doing it wrong, but the fact is that we need a same space, N'Yanyi, Kwanget, Balai, I was, victimized, none of you was victimized. Another issue, when I went to the campus and Kenya Science, they told me, example of lecturers, N'Naw, frustrated, because that's another big issue as well. You complain, Apa, this are the virtual lectures affecting us. N'Ami, Kona, Magina, like, Kenya Science, people, N'aw, Widi. Me, Low School, N'Kona, Widi, Bado, Sia, N'apunzi, N'Kona, Widi, N'Joo, N'at frustrated. We have to, oh, everyone, N'atounte, M'Sara, Kapi, M'Kona, Lecturers, N'Naw, who affect, Pia, in a big, M'Wasemi. Because the president, we can, Kilamtu, we, Asemi, M'Shida, Zaki. So, see, Yav, lecture, M'anyana, Akopel, Notorious, Missing Mark, N'Asema.